Okay. Let me again welcome you to tonight's regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. And I'll start things off by asking our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson? Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rex Bailey?
Present.
Randall Harriman?
Here.
Mark Fugierus?
Here.
R.S. Kay?
Here.
All right, thank you. Item, we're at item four on the agenda if you're following along. This is the portion of each council member, uh, council meeting that we set aside for comments from our citizens. If we have any residents that would like to address the council briefly, we ask that you go to the microphone, clearly state your name and address. Please keep your comments brief and understand that nothing you bring forward tonight will be voted on tonight. So is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning something that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over the minutes. Uh, if there's no changes or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, item six. I'll turn over to our city attorney.
Thank you, council. Item number 16 on the agenda is an ordinance pertaining to the issuance of industrial development revenue bonds involving today's power ink. The statute requires that before this ordinance can be taken up by the council, a public hearing is required and notice of the public hearing was published as required by the statute. Council actually previously passed a resolution to bring this forward back in February. So we'll take up the item when we get to item 16. But is there anyone here who wishes to comment? Not, then we'll take it up when we get to the item on the agenda.
All right, thank you. We will move on to item seven, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
I move for A and B.
Motion of second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right. We get item eight, we get to do employee recognition. Ben, I'll meet you up at the podium.
Okay. So I wanted to nominate, is this on? Ryan Carr is our Deputy Director of Engineering. He came to the city in 2016. He's a professional engineer, professional transportation operations engineer, professional transportation planner, and a certified floodplain manager. I nominated Ryan because he really was the glue holding my department together before I got here. We were down to about 50% of our staff. And as I asked questions, where is this? What do we do? How do we do that? Every answer was, talk to Ryan. So I just wanted to acknowledge that he was the glue holding everything together, and I want to appreciate what he's done during that time to get us to the point where we are now. So with that, Ryan, would you come up?
Thank you, Ben. It's always exciting working for the city in so many areas and on so many different projects. I can't do it, of course, without such a fantastic team, and we truly have that. Whether it's streets or drainage or anywhere in between, it's, it's running very smoothly, and I'm very thankful to work with such amazing people that are so dedicated to the betterment of the community. Thank you very much for this. It's a great honor.
Ryan, besides being very good at what he does, he's also a great team player. He's great to work with, and I want you to know I appreciate that. You've been a huge help and continue to be.
Thank you.
So with that, here's a small token of our appreciation from the city of Springdale. And join me again in thanking Ryan. All right, there's Jamie. Jamie Vernon with Waste Management to bring our quarterly waste management report. Jamie?
Yeah, hey, good evening. I went old school this time after last meeting and brought hard copies. I would do better than rambling. Included my contact information to make sure everyone has my email and cell phone number for anything you may need from us. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the operation summary tonight. But one, one, one number on here really stuck out to me after the last few meetings, and I really thought to myself about what it actually is. About halfway down the page, it shows 562,302 customers and containers, including recycle, MSW, and yard waste. So what that means is monthly, we touch 187,000 homes in Springdale, whether over four pickups per month and yard, and trash, two pickups per month in recycle, and then yard waste. So it's just, it's really eye opening when you look at about 21,000 resident or 21,000 homes, and then we go by there by 187,000 residents. So that was, that was a neat stat to me and really popped out. Our commercial operations have been, been, been great. No major issues. You can tell from our operations that the city of Springdale is growing. I know you're going to hear that from your economic development information later, so that's really good to see. No accidents or industries reported in the third quarter. Q3 recycling, we're still right at 1.2 million pounds of recyclables per quarter, which is really good to see. You know, we're actively working to recycle right and recycle better. So we're continuing to work on that. But overall, Springdale does, does a really good job. Your disposal of your bulk waste at the landfill was down this month, which that's, I know that's good to see. You ran 114 loads. You were right at double that last year, or I mean, last quarter. About $10,500. Right about half of that for last quarter, so that's good to see for the city. So some, some things I wanted to spend time on tonight were customer service updates that we've been working on, and I've been working through and trying to really get a really good handle on exactly how our customer service reps and how our website works with the citizens of Springdale. So the first thing is the WM dialout. We have it set up right now. As of, I think, August, it's set up to where we can now do a dialout, an automated call to all the citizens of Springdale. So that's set up for inclement weather and holiday updates. And if you request anything else from us, we can send a call out to the citizens. It'll leave a voicemail, or there'll be an automated message that'll be rattled off, you know, when they answer the phone.
Jamie, I'm sorry, I want to ask-
Please.
I'm going to ask these as we go. Do you, does the resident have to do anything to get signed up for that, or?
No, sir.
Do they have access to their phone numbers?
All right, so we worked with the water department to get all those phone numbers connected to our system. So it took about three months over the summer to get all the phone numbers entered. Some of it had to be manually entered, just the way the numbers were set up.
Okay. If someone's not getting those alerts for some reason, we can, they can let us know or let you know, and you can add them?
So that was going to be my next saying is, we would like to do a test of that system. And I was getting ready to request that of you guys, and so probably the first message we'd like to send out is maybe something about recycling, just to make sure that gets out, and then a record, we can, in that request, we can say, well, that wouldn't help. We can figure out a way to do that.
Okay.
For sure. Then the next item is the, we've updated our customer service center, and it's Greenpages. And Greenpages is our system that we use in-house when a customer calls and they're from X zip code, or they say, we're from Springdale, we have a Springdale address. Customer service pulls it up, gives them all the information about the Springdale program. And so it now shows that cart contents plus one to two extra bags, so that may be placed on top of the container. I know that was the question. So now customer service knows to not say cart contents only. They're going to tell them cart contents plus a bag or two, and then they're also going to remind them that they're eligible to have an extra cart if they would like it, like to pay for that extra cart per month. So our online service requests are now also live. Previously, if you went to WM.com and tried to enter a service request online, you would have gotten an error as a Springdale resident. Prior to, about a month ago, the only customers that were able to use the online were customers that had an account number, so if they called and set it up and paid for it individually. The, what I call, single account customers, which would be Springdale, who pay through their water bill, would receive an error. So we've worked with our customer service department. Now it's set up to where they can go in and they can make a request for a cart repair. They can make a request for a new cart through WM's local Springdale website. And that website is currently linked to the city's webpage. It's already there. If you click through live and then slash utilities and local services, and then you click on waste, and that'll bring up our page, and then they have the ability to see what service is available to them, and then click into an online form that I have screenshots of on the next page, and shows where they can click the repair form or miss pickup form and walk through that. And then I also have a screenshot of the confirmation email that they receive. So they'll receive that email, and then that'll let them know time, well, not time, but the date that they should receive the service by. You'll, you'll see that there. It's my information. It won't look exactly like that, but that is a Springdale address that I pulled off of Zillow to do the test. So just to confirm, I wanted to make sure that we did it with a Springdale address. And that's all currently live on the Springdale website. And that's really all I had. One thing that I would like to do is discuss with the mayor's office and possibly the Springdale Water Department to send out an insert or add something to the water bill that directs them to that page. And then also internally, we're going to work on getting a message out to all the citizens about that page. Because I wanted to, I want to direct them to the city's website to get there, so it'll increase traffic to your side, it'll be accurate information, the phone numbers are correct. The phone numbers also now have our operations time from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. That's another thing that gets, gets folks confused is because they assume that it's a 1-800 number or a, or a corporation's phone number, that it's a 24-hour hotline. It's eight to five, which is pretty standard across the industry. I got to looking that up today. I wanted to see what everybody else's customer service number hours were, and about seven to five, seven to six is pretty standard.
That notice to the residents about this, the link to the website and how to do this, could that, could that be done through your new?
It could, and-
Your ability to send things out directly to customers or the texts?
It could, and I, I want to do that. My only concern is a voice message about a website. But I think that as long as we can direct them to the city's website, that they'll get there. That was my only, I was, I've been brainstorming about that as well, and that was my only concern. But yeah, we, we definitely want to make a hard push to get that message out as soon as possible.
Any questions for Jamie?
Yeah, on that, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right, I'm going. So you said the carton plus two bags? Is that two bags on top of the carton, or two bags with the lid open, with the bags on top of the trash? How's that work?
We're not going to not pick it up if the lid's open, but preferably it needs to be on top of the lid.
On top of the lid?
Right.
Okay.
That way it'll dump cleaner into the hopper. Sorry.
I have worked with Mr. Vernon just closely the last couple of months on a couple of issues with constituents, and I am over the moon excited with the hard work that he has done. He doesn't just address one specific problem for one specific person, but then he comes back to me and says, this is how I have solved this for all the residents that could possibly have that issue and some. And I just, I am very, very pleased, and thank you very much.
Thank you, that's very kind.
That's a big old ship you've worked for, and it's hard to turn, and I, we appreciate having you here to help us navigate those things.
It's a, it's a large boat. Thank you.
Thanks.
You guys standing in back, we got plenty of seats up here. You want to come sit down?
All right, item 10, Chamber of Commerce, Springdale Chamber of Commerce report. I saw Bill, yeah, Bill's here, and he handed, handed out hard copies to the council. I did, thank you. I, I'll keep it brief. I don't want to stand between you and election coverage tonight. I know that's fascinating for all of you. I really want to highlight the first item, and, and just pleased to tell you, I know we were all familiar with the thousand job announcement, Tyson Foods, and in a very short period of time, and we're talking about two weeks, everyone was, was responding quickly. We partnered with the city staff and the Springdale School District, the mayor, Colby, Anna, numerous people with schools, just to, in the regional effort, to, to try to recruit as many of those thousand jobs here. And I don't know if you're familiar with it, but Tyson put together a series of four expos, if you will, where they flew anyone who wanted to from South Dakota or Chicago to come in here to explore the area. We, we, from a chamber perspective, did a number of things. We created a video specifically for them, some specific online content for them, trying to answer questions. We've done some geofence post-trip marketing to these people. And then tomorrow night, city staff, chamber staff, and the school district staff are going to host a virtual town hall we're going to do on Zoom. So anyone who came in here, or anyone that they went back to and said, hey, here's an opportunity, we gave them some material, a QR code. We have no idea what kind of response, but we felt like it was just that extra step. And in fact, I think Colby gets credit for even coming up with the idea when we were doing our planning meeting for just a way to relieve their concerns. These folks have a lot of questions and a lot of issues, but we're trying to get as many of them to, we, we know we're going to get all their jobs. We're trying to get as many of, of those folks as we can to live here and go to school here. So just a detail on that. Couple of companies that we are working with specifically right now, they are not in Springdale today. We think very positively, one of them could make a decision as soon as next week, and the other we're working on diligently to, to get a decision soon. 1,341 jobs since the start of the year, 2.4% unemployment. There you see, sales, sales tax increases 19.9% over September of '21. Obviously, our economy is, is red hot right now. We're also seeing that with regard to our hotel receipts, E and P tax. Staggering numbers. We know part of that is, has to do with what, what they're charging, but people are traveling. Business travel is picking up. Item that you, we don't, aren't able to bring to you, but just a few times a year, the cost of living, they're the next to last on page one. The, our metro area, so Washington Benton County, the cost of living, which is, which is, that's compiled, compiled by a company nationwide, the Council for Community and Economic Research. 91.7 is the indices number for our region. That is below 100%, 8.3% below the national cost of living average. You would think transportation, healthcare, housing would be numbers or indices that we would be higher than the national average, and as a matter of fact, we're below on all of those. But miscellaneous, the category miscellaneous goods and services, and it's kind of a catchall. Everything from fast food, major appliance repair, movie tickets, alcohol, a number of other things. That one category comes in above the national average, but for 25 years, Northwest Arkansas has been well below the national average, and we still are, even though we all are feeling it with inflation. Page two, just to hit a couple of things. I, I assume most of you are probably, because you drive around so much, the, our third Starbucks, those are company-owned stores, by the way. Our third Starbucks is now open. The, we cut the ribbon for Pure Springdale. It's a beautiful development out on Jean George Boulevard. Andy's Frozen Custard, we had a chance, the mayor was there when we cut the ribbon. Company founder and owner and his wife were here. They, they made a point to come down from Springfield. Five items there from downtown. Maybe you are not aware that Slim Chickens is opening their second location, that's in the old Hardee's location. I think most of the other things there you're familiar with, you might not be familiar with Pedal Junction, new retail location. If you've not stopped in there, do so and engage the store owner. If you have any background in racerback athletics, get her to talk about her dad. Clyde Smackover Scott, and it's, it had a really neat time. And also, she served in the White House, so she's got a political background. She's just a really neat person to get to know if you have a chance to do that. If you missed the announcement, Wiener Schnitzel, their first location is going to be in Bentonville, but their second location in Northwest Arkansas is going to be in Springdale. Excited about that. And construction underway, at least site work for the Hawaiian Brothers Island Grill, notably there. You may never have heard of that restaurant before, but they've got locations in Missouri, Kansas, Oklahoma, Texas, Illinois, and New York. So we're excited to have them here. With that, unless you have questions, I'll move forward to the next item. Anyone?
Hey, Bill, just two quick questions. In the past, I know at least in one report on jobs, you would say 1,500 new jobs was, and now it's saying 1,300 filled. Is, is there a difference in that? Do we have that many created, or is that just how many has been filled since unemployment?
Those are new jobs, and that number will fluctuate because each month, the state reevaluates the numbers and flushes it through, and they, they correct their numbers. But those, those would be new, new positions in Springdale for the, for the 2022.
Okay, and do you by chance know how many open jobs there are in Springdale proper right now?
No, I don't. That state does not give us that number.
Good, thank you.
Looking at our 2.3% unemployment rate, it's- Well below full employment. Yeah. And yet, you know, people continue to come, and, and we continue, our economy continues to grow, we, our businesses continue to expand and create jobs. We're very fortunate. Any other questions for Bill? Thanks, Bill. All right. We are at number, item number 11, a resolution making an appointment to the Public Facilities Board. This is presented by Bill Rogers. You don't- I, I have recommended to the council that we fill Rex Bailey's position with Rick Barrows. And the way this process works is the, the, the chamber is tasked with submitting three names, and then I'm to bring one of the names forward to the council for consideration. And I'm bringing Rick Barrows forward, and I've read the resolution.
Move we approve. Mayor, you need to tell Rick he's going to, you know, I have all the confidence and word that he can replace me.
Tiny shoes.
Yeah, yeah. And thank you for your years of service on there, Rex, by the way. We have a motion in a second? Okay. We have a motion, we have two motions in a second. Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you, and thanks to Rick for his willingness to serve there, too. Item 12 is a resolution making reappointments to the A and P Commission. We have two council members on the, that serve on the A and P Commission, is Mike Overton and Mike Lawson. And I don't, I haven't actually checked with you guys to see if you wanted to continue, but I want, I would love for you to, and that's why-
Your office did.
Okay, that's why I brought the resolution forward. So I've read the resolution.
The resolution passed.
Okay. We have a motion of second to approve that resolution. Roll call, please.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item 13, a little different process, but it is a resolution making reappointments to the Public Vehicle Commission. The Public Vehicle Commission was established by the city council many years ago, and we have three council members that make up that commission. And I'm asking if those three continue in that role. It's Amelia Williams, Mark Fugierus, and Rex Bailey. So I've read the resolution.
The resolution passed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the resolution. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, and thanks again to all the council members who are serving on those, continuing to serve on those two commissions. Appreciate it. Item 14, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations by Patsy Christie. Patsy?
The first item is a replat of Lot 2 of the Hague Brown Commercial Edition. Planning Commission review this request. This has to do with Wiener Schnitzel, and if we move this forward quick enough, we may get the first Wiener Schnitzel in Springdale after all, because the one in Bentonville's kind of held up, so. The title of the ordinance reads, an ordinance accepting the replat of Lot 2 Hague Brown Commercial Edition to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency.
Is it going to go on to-
It's going on to Lot 2, yes.
Okay.
Actually becomes 2A, but, yeah.
I'll make a motion that the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance?
What's the, what's the entrance?
It has a shared access drive with Starbucks.
Starbucks in the south?
Uh huh. All of these have to access from the south. There is no access to Elm Springs Road on the north side of any of these lots.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
As usual, the emergency clauses are included because there's pending action. The next item is a replat of Lots 64, 65, 66, and 70 of Silent Nose Subdivision. This is up on Silent Grove Road. They're being combined into one lot. Planning Commission review this request and recommends approval. Title of the ordinance reads, an ordinance accepting the replat of Lots 64, 65, 66, and 70, Silent Nose Subdivision to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a request for a waiver of a sidewalk that's being built, that's being required in conjunction with a single-family dwelling being built. Planning Commission recommends approval of the waiver, to grant the waiver, which would be option one in the resolution. The title of the resolution reads, a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curb scutter, and sidewalks is set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Eric and Jill Miller in connection with 6,200 Copperhead Road, a single-family dwelling.
Resolution passed. Option one.
Second. Okay, motion a second for approving the resolution, the waiver with option one. Patty, I got a question, and I was going to ask this to Planning Commission, but I didn't want to interrupt anything. Can you go back to that other map? Yeah. I was questioning why, in a situation like this, you'd need a variance since the property doesn't go, I don't know, it just seemed like it...
This originally started as a tandem lot split.
So they own the property all the way to the road or not?
They or somebody does that belongs, see, it goes all the way down. See, that long narrow strip that's just to the south of that, you can see it, it goes all the way down to Wagon Wheel, and Copperhead Road is not a public street. It's really a private drive.
Okay, that was my question, is how could they even be required to do improvements along Wagon Wheel if they don't have?
Well, you can see the black line that goes all the way down. There's a county line in there that separates from the south, too.
Okay, thanks. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
All right, thank you, Patty.
Item 15, Finance Committee Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Thank you. So the Finance Committee has several items coming for us tonight. We've met several times, including meetings over the 2023 budget, and so I'm a little confused. I'll ask for some assistance. During the budget process, there was a request that came to the budget meeting for consideration of raises for the police department. And during that budget meeting, a resolution was moved and forwarded from that budget meeting to recommend with approval a resolution for those raises. At that meeting, we did not have a resolution, so someone's prepared one, I think that's 15A if I'm correct. Is that right, Ernest?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is the first time we actually have this actual typed up resolution because we did not have it at the meeting. So my confusion is the title to the resolution, is that accurate? Because are we, because there was a lot of discussion about whether or not this, these raises were going to be in the 2023 budget, or if they were going to be paid for out of the general fund. So I'm a little confused. Yeah, it's, so I don't know, does everybody else, does anybody else think it's warranted?
You want to tackle that, Colby?
Yeah. At the last meeting, we were asked, the direction was given to us, to go ahead and prepare a resolution that would make these changes go into effect on January 1st. That would take the money out of the unrestricted general fund, which has about 20 million, it'll have 22 million by the end of the year. That would be used. The value in that is that it wouldn't put any more pressure on the budget. You're still going to have a surplus, but the council forwarded that for us to bring forward this resolution, so that's what this one is.
This would leave the budget surplus at about 4 million. Approximately 4 million.
What you just said is exactly what I thought we did. My question, though, is why the resolution says we're amending the budget? Why are we amending the 2023 budget?
So whenever, whenever you approve the budget, whatever that may look like, it may get approved tonight, it may get approved in December, whatever it might look like, this resolution would amend whatever budget that is on January the 1st. It would take the money out of the unrestricted general fund and move the money, and it would amend the police salary budget, whichever budget you do pass on January 1st.
All that's in the budget that you will be voting on?
Next.
Is the 6% colon. So it doesn't?
And the incentive.
And the longevity pay. Those have been changed, and they're in there. But you're not, you're not voting on this raise that we discussed to bring it up to...
Colby, what difference does it make whether it comes out of the budget or of the general fund? If it comes out of the budget, if the projections fall short, we can always take it out of the general fund, so it really doesn't make any difference.
You could. The difference is that it takes, it puts less pressure on your budget until the end of the year. You could always go back and reappropriate funds into the police salary, but, you know, we've built up a surplus of what will be $22 million, and this gives your budget a little more cushion, so that's the value.
And practically, you're right. It makes, because whatever we don't spend stays in the general fund anyway. But I think the, I think the, and the discussion that night, as I remember, the council just felt better about having that $4 million cushion in the budget.
Colby felt better about that, too.
Well, the council made this resolution.
I was just trying to find a solution.
And forwarded it with...
No, it's the way that, it's the way the motion, this is the way, what you said to begin with was the way the motion was made.
Yes.
I just wasn't sure about how the, the resolution read, but I guess I understand what you're saying is, if, if and when we pass the 2023 budget, it will have to be amended to...
That's right.
Make these raises.
But this will, if you approve this, it does amend it. We're not going to have to come back at the first of the year and amend it.
Which is kind of what I thought we would.
Yeah.
I thought that's kind of what we talked about, but it doesn't matter. I mean...
Frank, did you have anything to add? We kind of jumped, you were presenting this, and we...
The only thing I wanted to add that hadn't been mentioned earlier was, we open up applications tomorrow, so there's a big benefit to us if this gets passed tonight, because we can advertise our starting pay for January, because that's when all the hires will be made off of this next test that we open applications for tomorrow. So we can advertise it tomorrow.
We're setting about, was it 17 positions open?
Yes, we have 17 openings on patrol right now.
How many others?
We haven't opened applications yet. We're still working through the last test. We open applications for the January test tomorrow.
So Mayor, to read the title to the resolution.
Okay.
A resolution amending the 2023 budget of the Springdale Police Department and improving salary increases for law enforcement officers. Again, this resolution was forwarded from the, I guess, Finance Committee budget process with recommendation for approval.
Move the resolution passed.
Second. Okay, we have a motion a second to approve the resolution. Are there any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carrie's eight zero.
So during that process, we also considered the mayor's proposed 2023 budget, and with some changes that were made during the full day on Friday, whatever day that was, and then on Wednesday of the committee meeting. And I believe, am I, am I correct, that that budget was forwarded to council without any recommendation?
Correct.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and read the resolution that's before us tonight. The title to that resolution is a resolution approving the city of Springdale, Arkansas budget for the year 2023.
Colby, could you, sorry, I'm not looking. Could you tell us about what Annison out to us? She sent a bunch of pages, new numbers, I suppose. Can you tell me, can you tell us what the changes were that required that comeback?
We gave you a list of changes in your Dropbox. Those were the ones we discussed on last Monday. And then we, the other change that was made that was updated to you in your Dropbox is going to be adding the fire, firemen's longevity pay as well. So those numbers should all reflect that, the police and the fire longevity. Those are your, those are your new pages.
Of that million, you know, we, my proposed budget had a $5 million surplus. We're now setting it at $4 million, and what you're considering tonight, that million dollars basically was eaten up with longevity pay for police, fire, and the $300,000 for the pickleball courts. That, that ate up, that was the lion's share of the changes as far as, as far as impact to the budget.
That's right.
And was that dispatch as well?
Yes, dispatch is included in that.
Yes, dispatch, that's right.
Mayor, I was not here at the committee meeting. Is there any reason why we have to push the budget tonight, or could we wait till two or next committee, council meeting?
Well, that's up to y'all. I, you know, we've, we've delayed, I'm getting no questions about it.
Okay.
And we've delayed in the past, and we spent two weeks and didn't make any changes. So if there are other things you want us to look at, I mean, I mean, y'all, y'all control this, so you, but I would, well, I'll just leave it there. It's whatever y'all, obviously, whatever y'all want to do, so. It's always good for us to get it behind us. That's my, that's my point. And if we don't have questions, burning questions that we've got to bring forward, then I don't know why we would want to delay it another two weeks.
I think we also have a full council present, which has been hard to do here lately, so if nobody opposes that, then I would like to make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion a second to approve the resolution. We're on 15B. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Okay, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
No.
Carrie's six two.
Third item has, basically is part of the budget process as well, as far as setting salaries for elected officials, including Planning Commission members. And again, this is, I'm not sure that we actually forwarded this, but something that we have to do every year.
The, the numbers are in the budget, but you're right, the, we didn't discuss the actual ordinance.
But we're required to do it.
Right.
It's my understanding we're required to do it by ordinance every year.
That's right.
And so I'll read the title to the ordinance. An ordinance setting the salaries of the elected officials and Planning Commission members of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and repealing ordinance number 5674.
Move the ordinance be adopted. Second.
Okay, we have a motion a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
It does have an emergency clause, but it makes it effective January 1st, 2023.
Move emergency clause be adopted. Second.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes, ma'am.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
Thank you, council, and I know the employees of the city of Springdale, thank you, and will continue to do, do great work, and, and this will really help us compete with, with keeping talent and attracting talent, and we appreciate it.
So the fourth item from the Finance Committee has to do with a change order for water and sewer improvements related to the Razorback Greenway. I thought, and it's not clear from our agenda, but I thought that this was forwarded from the committee with recommendation for approval, I believe it was.
It, it's on the printed agenda as a recommendation.
It is?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay. Yes, it was forwarded with recommendation for approval. This money would, for these changes would be reimbursed by the Water Department.
Right.
So the title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to approve a change order with milestone construction for water and sewer improvements related to Razorback Greenway realignment project.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions? Ben's here, if you have any more questions about it.
Does this include any of the additional work for watering stuff on, along Emma? The planters and that such thing?
No, this is just re-updating the water line that's going under the improved street section, so it doesn't break a week after we finish and have to dig it up to replace the water line. So this is just the main line improvements. This does not include any irrigation.
I think the things you've mentioned are already in our contract.
Isn't that an old line?
Yeah, it's, it's asphalt cement, so it's destined to crack, it's just, just look at it wrong, and it will.
I was just asking, because I've had a couple of businesses call me about, they were told by milestone they're gonna be closing down in front of their business during holidays.
The sidewalk is committed to stay open throughout. The street is closed, we are hopeful that we can get the bicycles back across Emma Street by Valentine's Day or so, and we're hopeful that we can get the street open to traffic by around spring break.
But there are new sidewalks, right?
Yes.
Going in, so obviously, Mike, or Mark, there'll, there'll be some disruption there, but the good news is that all those businesses have rear access.
Yeah, and in front of the existing businesses, there's, they're not, the sidewalk's not being replaced.
Oh, it's not.
Existing brick pavers are just the two that are out next to the curb, so when the curb comes out, those two lines are gonna come out, curb's going back, and then those bricks are getting replaced.
Good.
So you'll still be able to access those businesses that do not have a rear access?
Yeah, nobody will be shut off during any part of this.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
We already had it.
Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
The final item from the Finance Committee had to do with the purchase of two snowplows to be paid for out of the general fund, and this, uh, recommendation, uh, was forwarded to the council with recommendation for approval. The title to this resolution is a, an resolution authorized, and resolution, should be a resolution, a resolution authorizing the purchase of two snowplows for the Public Works Department to waive competitive bidding and for other purposes.
Resolution be adopted.
Second.
Does this go with that beef supply that we have to use for ten years?
Hey, we're gonna have a bad one this year.
We use, we may, we may use some next Tuesday, right, James?
That's right.
Um, all right, we got a motion of second. Any other comments or questions? All right, Denise?
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Mike, you know by now, this is our best insurance against getting snow.
How many covers are still working on the biggest?
Okay, item sixteen, we're at the, I'm gonna turn that over to our city attorney, that's their, we had our public hearing on earlier.
We did, and bear with me, it's a rather long title, but it's an ordinance authorizing the issue of an industrial development revenue bond under the authority of Act Number Nine of nineteen sixty as amended for the purpose of securing and developing industry near the city, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement providing for the sale of the bond, authorizing the execution and delivery of a trust indenture securing the bond, authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between the city as Lesor and Today's Power, Inc., as Lessee, authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement for payments in lieu of taxes, authorizing the execution and delivery of other documents relating to the issuance of the bond, and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
First, does this go through the city or does it go through the county, too? Just the city that approves this?
May I go with the microphone?
I would think the county has to do it, too, but I don't know. You get these when you're on with form court, Rick?
Yeah, I'm Gordon Welborn with Keytack Rock Law Firm, uh, on behalf of Today's Power as bond counsel. Both the city and the county actually have the power to issue bonds under Act Nine. Uh, the city's power actually is within or near the city limits, this is within the city limits, but, uh, so, this was just the path that they chose, I think you would normally go to the city if it is within the city limits.
Okay.
For purchasing of the bonds, they, uh, they, they're, they're tax-free, correct?
Well, this, this issue, the Act Nine issue, the, the purchaser of this bond will be a subsidiary of the company, this issue is done solely for the purpose of property tax abatement, um, a- as a lot of these are now, so there's no marketing of these bonds.
Okay. You have questions? Do we have a motion?
Move the order to be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance, no other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Williams?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Carries eight zero. Does it have an emergency clause?
Yeah, I, I should've clarified this with you before, is the referendum period in Springdale thirty days?
Yes.
We don't need one.
Okay, carries eight zero.
You rescind your...
I rescind.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
It's a monumental moment.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. See, we don't always do it. Um, all right, thank you, item seventeen is also earnest.
Thank you. This is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris located on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring emergency property located at eight hundred Henrietta Street.
Move ordinance pass.
Okay, we got a roll, uh, motion of second, any other comments or questions? Is anyone here that needs to speak about this property? Okay. Roll call, please.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Second.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Bailey? Harriman? Fugierus?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Both the ordinance's mercy clause carries eight zero.
Thank you, item eighteen, a discussion on the date for the second city council meeting in November. Uh, Anna did send out a, a survey to the council, we, we did receive, uh, I don't know, four or five responses, uh, uh, one could not make it on the, yeah, the, the week of Thanksgiving, and, uh, and then the other three said it didn't really matter, one other, one other one also preferred moving it, uh, forward a week to, uh, to the week after, the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. So, should be an easy discussion if y'all don't have a reason to wanna have it during Thanksgiving week. It doesn't, it doesn't mess up our next committee meeting date or anything, we've got an extra week in November, so.
Finally, objection is consistency is, you know, completely second to four.
Right. Well, this has let, Patsy, if you, you can contact anybody having to do with planning issues, that, that's usually a big night for planning to be moved forward, I think it's gonna be better for everybody, uh, to get it off of Thanksgiving week, since we can. Okay. Okay. Is that all right with everybody? I mean, we got a general consensus that we'll do it on the, what is that, the twenty-ninth?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, any comments from council? City attorney?
No, sir.
Nothing from me.
Mayor?
Mayor? Whoa, 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 okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
So, I just wanna, I just kinda wanna raise a question, um, and I'm not sure who, I kinda briefly brought it up to Patsy, I think I still need a little better explanation, maybe you know something about it, Mayor, or somebody else. Uh, in the chamber's report tonight, one of the items was the new pure Springdale development at the northwest corner of Don Tyson Parkway and Gene George Boulevard.
Right.
So, if y'all have been by there, basically, it's an apartment complex that's just been built on that corner of the roundabout. As I recall, that was supposed to be some sort of multi-use project, and that's how I recall it being sold to us, as some sort of multi-use project, that there were gonna be retail, it was gonna be a mixture, uh, uh, mixed use, I guess, not multi-use, mixed use, mixed use project, I'm sorry.
And it was a pud.
Yeah, it was a pud, it was a pud, and because of that, it was gonna be a mixture of retail and apartments. I'm just wondering if that's changed, because it sure does not look like any retail is being developed in that complex.
Is that up to the owners of the pud?
I don't know, but...
Well, they've gotta have the space for retail, obviously, it's up to them what to put in there and when, but...
They have the option to put it in there, that's the way the pud was approved, there are certain use units they can put in there, but there's nothing that requires them that they have to have it.
You're kidding me? So they were telling us it was gonna be mixed use, but they don't have to do it if they don't want to?
They're telling us they have the ability to put mixed use in there if they want to, which means some of the buildings, the bottom floor has higher ceilings that would lend to retail businesses or offices or something like that, but there's nothing that requires them to have to do that in those structures. Now, I do know they have an office in there, I know they've looked at for a couple of businesses, but they don't have anything in there yet, it may be too early.
Yeah, probably a little early.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, there needs to be a little bit more development in that area before they put some retail in there, and, and they have the capability, and the buildings